All right, we'll call our regular meeting of January 20th to order. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Publics Meeting Act have been satisfied. Notice this meeting was properly given in the new schedule of meetings of the Spotswood Borough Council on December 28th, 2015. The new schedule was transmitted to the Home News Tribune and Sentinel, filed with the Clerk of the Borough of Spotswood, and posted in the Municipal Building located at 77 Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey. We're going to rise for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have no minutes for this meeting. We have an ordinance on second reading, public hearing was set for tonight. The Clerk announcing that ordinance 2016-1 was posted in the Spotswood Municipal Building on January 7th, 2016, and advertised in full in the Home News Tribune on January 9th. A public hearing was set for January 20th, 2016. Ordinance 2016-1, an ordinance of the Borough of Spotswood County, Middlesex State of New Jersey, amend the code of the Borough of Spotswood, deleting section 2-65 or of chapter 2, Article 10, Department of Public Safety, Municipal Ambulance Division, and section 91-26 of chapter 91, Article 7, EMS Municipal Ambulance Division Third Party Payment Plan, and abolishing the Emergency Medical Service Department of the Borough of Spotswood.
This ordinance is going to be tabled until February 17th. That's for the second reading and for the public hearing. Do we need a motion and a second for that?
Yes.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Councilman Stolen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes, but I'm going to tell you right now, February 17th, I will be out of this state. I will not be here. Okay?
All right.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
We have an ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 2016-2 was posted in the Spotswood Municipal Building on January 7th, 2016, and advertised in full in the Home News Tribune on January 9th, 2016. A public hearing was set for January 20th, 2016. Ordinance 2016-2, bond ordinance amending in part, bond ordinance number 201412, adopted on November 10th, 2014, as amended by bond ordinance number 2015-4, adopted on May 4th, 2015, providing for water sewer utility improvements in the Borough of Spotswood in order to increase the appropriation therefore by 100,000 for a total appropriation of 1,195,000, and to increase the allocation of the appropriation to costs permitted under NJSA 48:20 authorized in and by the Borough of Spotswood and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
And I need a motion to open this for a public hearing?
Motion to open for the public.
Second.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Council President Stolen.
Yes. This ordinance is amending an ordinance. We have some aggressive infrastructure improvements going on. We have a new water interconnection that's happening on Burlington to East Brunswick to help with our water service while our plants are down. And we also have some sizable improvements going on with our sewer pumping stations. So there was a shortage in the amount of money we needed to complete this. The bids came in a little higher than we had hoped, so we're adding $100,000 to that bond ordinance with this amendment. Anyone have any questions on that ordinance? Not?
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Council President Stolen.
Yes. I make a motion, we pass this ordinance on second reading and publish it according to law.
Second.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Council President Stolen.
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 2016-3, Borough of Spotswood, Middlesex County, calendar year 2016, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank according to NJSA 48:45.14.
Make a motion, we pass this ordinance on first reading, set a public hearing for February 1st, and advertise it according to law.
Second.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Council President Stolen.
Yes.
We have resolutions under consent agenda. Council President, council members, I'd like to have a motion to accept the resolutions 2016-25 through 2016-28.
Make a motion, we move 2016-25, 26, 27, and 28.
Second.
Councilman Sealy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Droods.
Yes.
Councilman Ritchie.
Yes.
Councilman Service.
Yes.
Council President Stolen.
Yes. All right, that's the business end of the meeting. Any comments? Ted, anything? No? Ted?
Not seen.
March?
Go to the senior center and join if you're a member of 55 years old and older. There's lots of great stuff there.
Thank you, March.
Nothing.
Nothing, Leo? Don, anything? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I guess I'll do this now. I would like to ask Mr. Cluse to come up, please.
I actually want to do that after open public portion.
After open public?
No, we'll do it now because it might be a while. I'm sorry.
All right. The Cluse family has generously donated thousands of hours to set up their holiday lights. They had a two-minute show to put on, but our council president feels that three minutes is a waste of time for the --
How shameful. Shame on you.
That's what you told me.
Shame on you.
This presentation is to remember our Spotswood EMT, Hana Patel, who was tragically killed in a line of duty.
Wow.
Tonight, the Cluse family is donating the check that they raised to start the scholarship fund for Hana Patel. I personally feel not allowing a two-minute video is a slap in the face to the public, to Hana, to her family, and to Spotswood EMS. So if you'd like to present the check, we would like to take it. And I would personally like to thank you for what you've done on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be very happy to schedule it at another meeting. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. First off, I want to apologize to Austin Kosik, who was at our last meeting, and to the members of the audience that were at our last meeting. At that time, we had read the first reading of this ordinance on EMS operations, and it was very difficult having to hold the line. We were told by administration not to release figures. We were told after an email was written to the business administrator that the numbers were proprietary and that we were not to divulge them at this time until the public hearing. So it was hard for us. I held the line, I did what I was told, and then sometime after that, all the numbers were revealed on Facebook. So I want to apologize because it would have been nice to be able to release those numbers. But there's a couple reasons why we did not. We were still in negotiations, we did not want to tip our hand as to what our information was. Our budget is all public knowledge, but the analysis of that budget and the hours it took to crunch those numbers, those were proprietary. And those are something that if we're negotiating with other towns to provide services, to provide the best representation to the public, some of that information had to remain in our hands. And we said, if you had any questions, it was certainly fine to go to the business administrator and she could fill you in. But to release that publicly, we didn't want to do it. Well, certainly after that, they were all made public. So I did want to apologize for that.
But what you did fail to leave out, Council President, was the attorney was asked if the bids were allowed to be released, and the ruling was yes, because the public opening of bids is public.
Okay. But that was after I had already spoken, and we had an email that said they were proprietary.
But I just would like to let you know, you seem to always leave out the facts when it's not proper to you.
Nick, not now. All right. Change is difficult, and no one likes change. There's a quote from Tony Robbins, "Change occurs when the pain of staying the same is worse than the pain of change." And we're at that point. We have some very, we are very proud of some members of our EMS. They have done some wonderful things for residents of our community. But, you know, long ago, this EMS was started as a volunteer organization. People of our community selflessly dedicated so much of their time to be there and help save each other. Then there were external changes. EMTs were required to do more, the state had greater certifications, work lifestyles changed. And in 2006, due to staffing issues, we were unable to answer calls and wait times were becoming very long. Being proactive, Mayor Barry Zagnan at that time presented to Council President Jim Shern a very difficult decision, because both of those individuals were very proud members of volunteer EMS. But they put the citizens' welfare first, and they knew it had to be done. And in 2006, we started a paid EMS service. Leo Service was the president of the volunteer squad at that time, and he guided it through the changeover and became our first paid volunteer, I mean, our first paid director for eight years. We prefer not to have to change, but again, there's internal, external forces that we must adapt, and change again is necessary. If we don't adapt to change, then we become extinct. Before we open the meeting to questions, we're going to have some presentations tonight so we can be informed on the information. First up, we have Joe Zanga, our CFO, and he's done a lot of work with numbers, and we have some handouts. Ed, or Ted, you want to hand those out to people? So that you can help follow along with the numbers.
Sure. I just want to give a history from a financial perspective on how we got to this point today. One of my duties as a chief financial officer, in conjunction with Dawn, the business administrator, is to identify possible revenue and appropriation trends, either upward or downward. A few years ago, we were noticing a downward trend in EMS revenue. I'm going to give you a five-year history of where the revenue has gone. In 2011, realized revenue was $471,395.45. In 2012, realized revenue was $424,764.94. That was a decrease of $46,630.51. 2013, realized revenue was $383,315.48. That was a decrease in $41,449.46. 2014, realized revenue was $327,207.15, which was a decrease of $56,108.33. And 2015, unaudited, is $308,670.45, which is a decrease of $18,536.70.
Before you go on, Dawn, what year did we increase our rates?
We increased January 2015. We went from $675 a transport to $825.
And the big Medicare changes for the transports took effect between, well, you see, the $425 go down to $383. That's where we were making a lot of money. But with the new regulations, you need two doctors to sign off on it, and the rate also dropped.
So, excuse me, we're going to have an open public portion in a second. So, Joe, with the increase in charges that we had, we still had a decrease in revenue?
Correct. Yes.
Excuse me, Joe.
Excuse me. Wait a minute.
What is realized?
We will have an orderly meeting. Everyone will have their chance, but in order to have --
I don't know life. I just want to know what you said, realized revenue, and I don't know what it is.
No, realized means actually collected.
We will have --
Realized.
We will have a question and answer period. We'll have a question and answer period in a moment.
All right. I also want you to remember, too, when revenue decreases, it affects the current year budget and also the subsequent year's budget. The subsequent year's budget, you can only realize in a budget, or anticipate in a budget what was realized the year before. So if it decreases in one year, it also affects the subsequent year's budget. But I also want to stress, too, that typically municipalities do not generate revenue in excessive expenditures when it relates to public safety. You have to look at providing the best possible service in the most economic fashion. That's on the revenue side. On the appropriation side, it has been relatively level for the past few years, although the future could bring significant increases due to the Affordable Care Act, which will mainly increase benefits in full-time personnel. So really, in closing, I just want to mention that our job here is to bring to the governing body's attention any trends, either positive or negative, and then give the governing body information so they can make an informed decision.
And from the sheets that you've gotten, you'll see some options. One is Robert Wood Johnson amount. You see option one is in-house with family coverage, so that would be figured on the highest side if everybody had family coverage, which might not, or probably will not be the case in the beginning at least. Option two, it would be if everyone was just offered single coverage, so that would be the lowest possible way to provide the services, because then you're only insuring the individual and not dependents. So just --
And they're net costs, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Net costs. Okay. So we provide that sheet for you. We're going to have another presentation by Robert Wood Johnson, and then we're going to open it up for the public questions. We have Matt. Let me just introduce you here. We had Matt Strager. He is the executive director of Robert Wood Johnson Mobile Health Services. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Matt.
We have Don Roberts. He is the administrating director. And we have Susan Crum, VP of Ambulatory Services. So we're going to have a presentation. Matt, if you could introduce and give some background on each of you, and we have a microphone here for you.
That's our task force. Thank you. Make sure we get to the back of the room with that. Can you hear me in the back? All right. I want to first take a moment and thank the mayor. I want to thank the council president, the members of the council, and the business administrator for inviting us here to speak to you today. And I want to thank everybody for coming out from the community, because this is an important issue, and I can see how passionate everybody is about this, to be heard and to have the answers to your questions, and I think you have a right to have that. It's important to me, from Robert Wood Johnson, it's important to our organization, that we're here to answer your questions and be as transparent as we can, so that you have the answers to understand what we're here to help with and what our mission is, what our goals are, what our capabilities are. I, to be frank, read Facebook just like everybody else, and I see a lot of the comments that are made, and I see some of the information that's not factually accurate. And I want to make sure that from our perspective, from the council's perspective, from the organization's perspective, that we're giving everyone the facts as they stand. It's also very important for me, just as a moment, as an introductory statement, to say something very important. I am an EMS professional with 30 years of professional EMS background. I've been in this job, in this field, since 1986. I've worked in many, many different places in different states, and I have a lot of friends in the community. We at Robert Wood Johnson EMS work with Spotswood EMS on a daily basis. We provide advanced life support coverage, paramedic-level coverage to the Borough of Spotswood, and we've done that since the early 1980s. I wanted to be clear that we have an extremely good working relationship with Spotswood EMS. Director Barbara Reese and I have a very good open dialogue. We communicate regularly about things. We have an open dialogue whether there are any issues at all that arise. And the members of the existing EMS agency here in Spotswood do a good job. I don't want there to be any consideration at all that there's any disparagement against Spotswood EMS from us. It is very important to know that we're partners in EMS, we're partners in representing the community and doing what we can to provide the highest level of medical care possible. The question I get asked is, why Robert Wood Johnson EMS? Why are you good? There are a lot of reasons of things that Robert Wood Johnson does that are exceptional EMS for the community. We are backed by an academic medical center, which I guess sounds like a platitude, it sounds like a thing that's just up there. There's a big hospital up the road, it's got a medical school attached to it. What does that do for you? What it does is it supports an EMS agency. And EMS ambulances live, at times, as a public safety agency like fire and police, and at times like a public health entity like a hospital, when we're supported very strongly in the strongest possible terms by one of the leading academic medical centers in the country. They provide us with economic support, they provide us with logistical support, they provide us with academic support on our medicine. A few quick examples of that. We pioneered several years ago a change in CPR techniques, that we took some best practices that were taking place in places like Washington State, up in Seattle. And everybody knows that Seattle was one of the first places that ever started doing EMS and started doing CPR and had very, very good save rates. Howard County, Maryland, also, the medical director there started a big program there, and it's called High Performance CPR, or PICC crew CPR. We at Robert Wood Johnson took the lead in bringing that to New Jersey, and have in fact rolled that out as one of the lead agencies in the state to the entire state. And we do this as a public service. We're not making any money on this, we're not doing anything to do anything but make sick people better, because that's what our mission is. By changing the technique that people do CPR with and changing how they do compressions, we took a cardiac arrest save rate of 7.5% roughly and raised it to 19%. And those are people that walked out of the hospital neurologically intact, doing nothing but changing the technique of CPR that we did, that we initiated. And then we offered that to the community, and we offered that to the EMS agencies in the community, we offered that to the police departments in the community and fire departments and other EMS agencies across the counties that we cover, because we believe in it. We also took the lead in spinal motion restriction. I'm sure that many people here, I know all the EMTs are familiar with this, I'm not sure if the people from the general public are familiar with the concept of being boarded and collared, having a collar put on your neck if you're in a car accident, and they put you on a long backboard and they take you to the hospital for x-rays. And after 40 years of doing this, we found they were actually hurting people by doing that, which is kind of odd if you think about it, and it's counterintuitive. But we discovered that that change makes people better. So we took the lead in rolling out what we call SMR, spinal motion restriction, that protocol, to the community, to all of our paramedics and our EMTs, but we offered that again to the entire EMS community over the communities that we cover, because it makes people better. Because at the end of the day, that's what we do. Dawn, I know you had a couple comments you wanted to make as well.
I think I'll just pass it off, and I will open it up if the council's ready, and we will address any questions.
Council President, did you have questions for us specifically before?
Well, Matt, one thing I wanted to ask, I think, which is on the residents' minds, what's the difference when a rig pulls up to a home, whether it's Robert Wood Johnson or whether it's a home-run, a home-provided institution?
So on the face of it, there's no appreciable difference. Spotswood EMS? I'm sorry?
Response time.
Please, you will have your chance. Please be respectful.
An ambulance, all right, I'll speak to response time. Our ambulances will be placed in the stead of a Spotswood ambulance. There'll be an ambulance that sits in Spotswood and responds in what I would imagine is almost identically the same response time as a Spotswood ambulance would. But because I realize that response time is a critically important piece to the community, I want to speak to that. When the Spotswood ambulance is right now unavailable, they're on a call, they're committed elsewhere, they're on another emergency, or maybe they're committed to a fire scene or some other large event where they're not going to be here for a while, the community relies on mutual aid. This community provides mutual aid to other towns, and when needed, they accept mutual aid on behalf of them. That's where you get your second ambulance from. Your second ambulance comes from another community, which dramatically increases the response time for every other call. What we do at Robert Wood Johnson, because we have a large fleet of ambulances in the community, we move ambulances strategically, using computers to tell us where the calls are likely to come in. We move those ambulances around. So if the Spotswood ambulance isn't available, as soon as that ambulance goes out, we move an ambulance in this direction to decrease the response time to the next call, and the next call, and the next call. And we do that throughout our service area. By having a large number of ambulances out, we will send our ambulances into Spotswood preemptively to be ready for the next call that happens. So I know that the next question becomes, will you send a Robert Wood J ambulance from farther away at the expense of another mutual aid ambulance that might be closer? And the answer is no. In the interest of patient care, if there is a closer ambulance than ours, by all means, the closer ambulance will always take the call. But we have an opportunity to provide that second ambulance closer than you would normally get right now. Onto the rest of the capabilities of an ambulance, a licensed ambulance in New Jersey is a licensed ambulance. So the EMTs have the same basic level of training, they have the same basic equipment, they have the same basic vehicle that all meets the standards for the state of New Jersey. Our paramedics and EMTs have quarterly competencies that we do on cutting-edge medicine. We require all of our EMTs and paramedics to train shoulder to shoulder every quarter on what we determine are important, cutting-edge, or maybe we've identified areas that we need to bolster our capabilities in. Our EMTs and paramedics come in every quarter and train up. So we do additional training, we bolster our response capabilities in that area. We provide equipment that I don't think is always available on every other ambulance, and I don't want to speak for Spotswood because I'm not sure, but we provide things, so it's called, say, a true CPR device, which is a feedback device that when you push on the chest when you're performing compressions, it's actually a little needle that tells you, are you going deep enough? So it provides immediate feedback to tell you you're doing good CPR. Our ambulances are GPS-located. So our dispatch center, what we call MedCentral, which is located in New Brunswick, can see every single ambulance, every single paramedic unit in our world, in our world that we control, in where they are in real time, which helps us move the ambulances around to maximize response time. Council President, I think that's probably a good start for the differences and what we provide.
Matt, could you speak to the two hospitals in New Brunswick? That just because you're terming it a Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital ambulance doesn't mean that choice of hospital remains with Robert Wood Johnson.
Absolutely. Very good point, Councilwoman. Our ambulances are branded Robert Wood Johnson, we provide the service. But our ambulances take patients wherever they want to go. So the first question that we ask a patient when we get in the back of the ambulance, other than what's wrong today, what do you need the ambulance for, is what hospital do you want to go to? We are required by regulations to follow certain destination requirements. If you have a trauma, you have a car accident, you're shot, or you're stabbed, or you fall off your roof, you're injured significantly, we have a trauma system that takes patients to trauma centers. Robert Wood Johnson is the regional trauma center for that. So we would transport patients from Spotswood by ground to Robert Wood Johnson for trauma, which is no different from what Spotswood EMS does today, because they're a licensed ambulance, they follow the same set of rules that we do for destination for trauma. Other than trauma, we transport patients that are in cardiac arrest, we're doing CPR on them, to the closest hospital. We always do that. That's standard medical practice. Anybody who's that critically ill, regardless, goes to the closest facility. Beyond that, we take patients where they want to go. So if the patients come to us and say they want to go to St. Peters, or to Robert Wood Johnson, or to Old Bridge Regional, or to Perth Ambu, we take them there. And what's nice is if we know we're going a little farther away, we'll actually push an ambulance into Spotswood to cover you while that ambulance is taking a trip that might take them out of position. A good example of that is fairly recently, maybe not that recently, within the last year, one of our ambulances was responding to a call in East Brunswick, and the patient wanted to go to Patterson, which is needless to say pretty far out of our normal coverage area to be transporting patients to. But it was the right thing to do for the patient. So we put another ambulance down to that area to cover the area, and we took the patient to St. Joe's in Patterson, which is probably a two-hour round trip. But it's what the patient asked for, there was no medical reason they needed to go to a closer hospital, so we met their needs.
Thank you. Any other questions from the dice?
Matt.
Sir.
Where will you station your ambulance and your duty crew for us?
I'm, wherever you ask -- Wherever you ask us to, sir. It'll be in the borough of Spotswood. I can't speak to right now where the ambulance will actually live.
Not the particular location, but there will be an ambulance and a crew 24/7/365 here.
Yes. There will be an ambulance, and the crew, an important point, the ambulance and the crew will live in Spotswood. The ambulance and the crew will start their shift in Spotswood and end their shift in Spotswood. They're not going to start in New Brunswick and then drive down Route 18 in rush hour and come here. We do this in a number of communities that we serve right now where the ambulance will, our personnel, our EMTs, will drive their cars to a station and start their shift at a station someplace else in the community. So in Spotswood, our EMTs would drive and start here. Another point on personnel, and I do want to hit this, is it's very important to us that we get to know the community. And we know Spotswood right now. We respond on the paramedic level to Spotswood and have for 37, 35 years. So Spotswood is not a foreign community to Robert Wood Johnson EMS, nor to our dispatchers who dispatch calls in Spotswood every day. Our EMTs, as much as we can, are going to be dedicated to this base. So it's typically about eight EMTs necessary to staff a unit 24/7. And granted that those EMTs will take off, they'll be sick one day, and they'll have a vacation day, or they'll be swapped out for some other operational need. But for the most part, we keep people in the community so they get to know the people in the community. They're the same eight people, for the most part, getting to know the community and the people and their needs, and the police officers who we respond to on a regular basis to calls, and the fire department who we respond to on a regular basis with calls, and to know the streets. And granted, every one of our ambulances has two different GPS systems to do turn-by-turn directions to get us to every call that we go to. So there's really no concern for us about getting lost on the way to calls, even if we put someone here who isn't that familiar with Spotswood. But we try very hard to keep our people here as much as possible so they get to know the community, they know the needs, they know the people. It just works better for us that way.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Mayor, any questions before we open it up?
No, sir.
No?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Our RFP for the primary ambulance has a requirement that the primary ambulance respond within 5 minutes 59 seconds 90 percent of the time. Do you foresee any problem in meeting that requirement?
None whatsoever. Our primary ambulance is going to be stationed in Spotswood. It will stand in the shoes of the ambulance service that you have right now and meet the exact same response times that your existing ambulance would right now. I don't foresee any problem at all in meeting the response time requirements. And again, as I stated, I think because of our ability to provide timely backfill to second calls, we will be able to provide a higher level of service in that area than you do get right now. Another level of service that we provide, and I know this is important, is we have an extremely robust command structure and additional capabilities. We provide medical special operations response. We had a medical infection control ambulance response team last year. I'm sure everybody heard about the emerging infectious diseases that were going on, so we developed a special team to respond to that. When you have a fire or a major emergency, we have supervisors on the road to come out and take command, provide incident command at those types of events, to provide rehab for firefighters. We are a lead agency in what's called the New Jersey EMS Task Force, which is a consortium of many, many EMS agencies around the state of New Jersey that was created after 9/11 to provide disaster response. So we provide the host agency for what's called an ASAP, which is kind of a four-wheel-drive off-road ambulance, and more importantly, for what's called the Mass Casualty Response Unit Number Five, or MCRU Number Five, which looks like a big fire truck that's painted white, but it instead carries 100 patients' worth of backboards, collars, oxygen, drugs, and the things you need for a major emergency. So if we have to respond to a huge fire and be there for days, we have the capability of providing command and support services for any type of major event that happens like that.
Thank you, Matt. And Matt, one of the things you mentioned, having the second ambulance respond, is the same as the first ambulance would be what we call soft billing. Soft billing is that the borough assumes, or I'm sorry, we pay a subscription fee where Robert Wood Johnson then makes up the amount that insurance doesn't cover. So we do not hard bill residents for either the first call or responding ambulance.
Yes, for any call that we respond to at Robert Wood Johnson, we would bill precisely the same way I believe your EMS service bills today, which is to say, we bill people's insurance. We bill Medicare, or Medicaid, or Horizon, or whoever your insurance is through, and we accept whatever insurance pays us for that ambulance service. If you're a resident or an employee of the borough, as you specified in your RFP, the borough is paying the difference through the money that you would be paying for this contract. So there would be no additional billing for municipal residents and municipal employees. So there's no change in that process from what exists today, as I understand it.
And I have to say, with the senior communities, we have Woodmere, Crescent Park, Clearwater. Some of these are income restricted as well, and I've had a great deal of concern of residents to me about the hard billing aspect. And right now, when we have our first ambulance out, a second call when Monroe comes in, as they did 80 times last year, they are hard billed. So thank you very much.
One other point, and it's important for us. When we bill for service for patients who have a demonstrable financial hardship, we have a hardship waiver process. So if someone comes to us at Robert Wood Johnson and says, I'm on a fixed income and I can't afford this for whatever reason, we have a process in place to make sure that your elderly resident on a fixed income, for example, doesn't get put in collections and lose their house over an ambulance bill. It's just not what we do. We have a process very, very robust. We do that on a regular basis, unfortunately we're forced to because of people on fixed income and the cost of healthcare, we do that very regularly.
And I think you also spoke a lot about the resources that Robert Wood Johnson would bring to our town for training of AED, training for firefighters, and for senior centers. You would have these resources that would be available to us as well.
Absolutely, and it's important. Robert Wood Johnson, as I stated earlier in my presentation, has the PICC Crew CPR program, and we offer that honestly to any community that wants it. So if there's any EMS, or fire, or public safety agency, police agency that wants the PICC Crew training, we train that. In addition, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital has a community teaching mission to come to the community and to teach, and to teach CPR and AED classes, but also to do community health and wellness. And to be honest, that mission existed last week and it will exist tomorrow regardless of the outcome of what happens here in Spotswood. That is the hospital's community health mission, and that's unchanged by what we do today.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Don. If you stay there, we're just going to...
Matt, would you just clarify soft versus hard billing when it comes to ALS? Because this way, there's no misunderstanding.
Very good point.
ALS has always been hard billed.
Yeah, so the councilman brings up a good point. We at Robert Wood Johnson provide two emergency 911 levels of service. One is called basic life support, which is what's provided at the municipal level, which is what we're talking about tonight. One is advanced life support, which is paramedic level. And we've provided the paramedic level to Spotswood for 35 years. That level comes usually in what looks like a sport utility vehicle. It's, say, a Chevy Suburban. It doesn't have a stretcher in the back, but the paramedics in that have a higher level of training, and they do have additional capabilities that frankly our ambulances nor Spotswood ambulances have. But we work as a partnership to do that. Those paramedics, and the system is set up this way by law, have heart monitors, drugs, tubes. We can provide effectively all the advanced care that you get in the emergency room in your living room, no matter where they are. We've been providing that. Paramedic service is unchanged by this, regardless of what happens. We will continue to provide paramedic-level service to Spotswood regardless. That's our mission. And our billing for that is not affected by whatever happens here tonight or with this ordinance. Our billing for that purpose is, the billing, say this right, the subscription service through this ordinance potentially will not affect the paramedic-level billing. So there's no offset for a balance bill for the paramedic level, only for the basic level. That being said, the hardship waiver process always remains in place. So if there's anybody who calls us for paramedic-level service or for basic-level service and can't pay for it, they can't afford it, we always have the hardship process for that regardless.
Thank you, Matt. Everyone sit?
Yep. Thank you, Matt.
We're going to, just hang on here now.
Do you have any comments or anything you want to wrap with here for us?
Not at this point. I think there's a lot of people out there that have a lot of questions, and we'd like to be able to help you with the answers.
Thank you, Don. So we're about to open it to the public for your questions and comments. And we honestly believe that when you receive answers to your questions, that reasonable people will understand the decision this council's making. I can't say that people involved in emergency services are, we can't sway you one way or another if you have a vested interest in this, but we believe the residents will see what the light is here. We respect your opinion, and we expect you to respect ours. And this meeting is going to be a civil discussion, and it must remain orderly for statements to be reflected in the minutes of our meeting. When you come to the podium, we're going to ask you to state your name and address for the record, and I want you to address all questions to myself, and I will farm them out to who I think can answer them the best way. Due to the number of people here today, to be fair to everyone, we are going to limit podium time to five minutes. And with that, I'll take a motion to open to the public.
Motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yes, Jackie, you first.
Jackie Palmer and I, Chupin Street. As you all know, I know all of you very well on this dais, and this is something that I had been passionate about back in June, when the first option came up that we were going to go to RFP for this. And I made sure that I did my homework as well on everything, as all of you have. So I have a few points that I wanted to go through, and I will have a couple of questions also. So I always do my standard, you know, I don't always like to get up and talk in public because of, you know, my family's relationship within this borough and that my husband does work for this town, but I do my disclaimer now that my thoughts and actions that I am speaking do not reflect those of anybody that might have, you know, issue with it. So there's a couple of issues that I see with this ordinance. The first one, first and foremost, and I called Marge, I spoke with her, you state in your ordinance that there was a feasibility study done. There's been no such feasibility study that has been provided to anybody. So I'm very concerned about the fact that that is written into the ordinance. You talked about the Affordable Care Act and the Obamacare and the potential of providing healthcare coverage to our employees. That's an issue. Eliminating our vital service without adequate notification to our residents. Let's be honest, we were all kind of surprised that this came about so quickly. Maybe it wasn't a surprise to you guys in the past couple of years that you've been going through this process, but it was surely a surprise to many of us, and especially our EMS team that works and continues to work today, even unknown what's going to happen to their jobs. All discussions are in regards to Robert Wood Johnson. I haven't heard one thing said about Monarch, but they put in a bid. They're not here to tell the people how they're going to, you know, provide service should we decide to go with their bid. It's only Robert Wood Johnson. I find that to be a little bit concerning to me, that only Robert Wood Johnson is here today to stand up and tell us what's really going on. All FEMA money and to rebuild our lost EMS, that's been put to the wayside. No discussion. In all reality, you can't put a price on hometown EMS services or any service that's provided to our residents here. You can't put a dollar price on that. And you know what? Leo has spent years of his life, and the fact that I watched him sit up here and vote that actually made me sad, to think that he would throw that away. And the bottom line to me, and I've watched you guys do this for now a long time, small-town politics and vendettas are clouding the judgment of this borough and of what is best for these residents. You guys, I watched it today. Everybody in this room watched today. This has gone on for three years now, and it is really, really disgusting. We have benefits to having a local EMS. They have, we have caring, well-trained, certified, dedicated employees. Not to say that Robert Wood Johnson's will not be, but these are our community members. We have dealt with them. We have, they come to all of our activities. They come to the mayor's breakfast. They do all those extras that we have within this borough, and that's what's important to the residents. I've talked to hundreds, Kurt, hundreds of people in the past two weeks, same as you have. I know you've been doing the same thing I have.
Thank you, Jackie. Your time is up.
Three minutes forty-five seconds.
I have five minutes. After some other people have spoken, you come back, see how it goes.
Let her finish.
No. We said, to be fair to everybody, five minutes. We have to be fair to everyone.
Hello. I'm Diane. I manage Clearwater Village. And I do want to thank right now the EMS, because I will say, they are in the community, they're all the time, they've been very helpful. But I am going to say, I don't come to the meetings that often, maybe annually because of the license. I think tonight was an absolute disgrace for the mayor and for you two, Curtis, the two of you, to say and do what you did is a disgrace. If you cannot, behind closed doors, civilly speak to each other and not bring this to the attention, and honestly, all of you out here, I know you're all EMS and everything else, and I thank you, but you got to be civil. I know you're passionate, and I understand all this. I did my homework too. I posted in Clearwater. I had all of the questions. I asked them all, and I did get a lot of the answers. I still have a lot more. But you got to be civil. I mean, I deal with it every day with the residents, and you can't just attack and be the way you are. I do have some questions that are unanswered. I was, to me, I mean, again, I don't, I'm from Spotswood from many years ago. I'm in Monroe now, but my heart is in Spotswood. I love my job. I love the residents, and I'm here for them tonight. So, all being said, one big question I do have, when we have an emergency, I have like a regular schedule or a format that we follow. And one thing I will tell you is the EMS does come out. Now, we haven't had, thank God, an emergency for a while, but I give them, I have an emergency list for people that are either on oxygen, people, whatever the case is. They come out and they literally help me go to those homes. I go pick them up and bring them to the clubhouse because we have a generator. And I, when it was Sandy, I was there five days, and I made breakfast, lunch, and dinner. All the residents helped, we supported them, we paid for the food, and not because my boss said to do it. I just handed them a bill, and they didn't question it at all. The point I'm trying to make is what happens in, God forbid, that emergency, are we going to still have the same care from EMS?
Yes, if you would.
I would be glad to.
Okay.
To answer shortly? Yes.
Okay.
We will follow the conditions provided in the RFP. We will provide the service that the township wants to see to every resident that is here. We are, want to be embedded into the community. We want to be there for the football games, for any other special events as part of this community. We are here to provide a service.
Okay. And now it's going to be the tough part, and I apologize to all of you because I know you're passionate. This is your jobs, and I understand that completely. But I'm going to look at the dollars. I really am. And I know what you said, Jackie, and I hear you, but I'm going to really look at the dollars. And one question I do have, where does Helmeta come into play in this?
Okay. We already have spoken to Helmeta's mayor after the meeting that the business administrator and I had with another community, and we are working with them. We intend to be a fair partner with them, but currently, the amount that they are paying is not sufficient for the services that are being offered, so...
What does the contract say? Does the contract say that we provide ser...
No, the contract with Robert Wood is with us.
It's just with you?
Yes. But we have the ability to do a shared service after that. And currently, they are paying $3,000 a year for hard billing. They were offered $10,000 a year for soft.
Okay, but that's because we get the revenues of it, and it makes kind of sense. Now we're getting a flat bill of $300,000, so let them pay their own share.
Well, that's all got to be...
Divide it equally, and that's what it is.
That is correct.
There's no such thing as quote-unquote "a good neighbor" as far as when it comes to dollars, taxpayers, that Spotswood's paying versus what they're going to pay. They should pay their equal share, because this is about increasing tax dollars. So.
That's, we're going to have to ask you to sit down again, let someone have a chance.
Okay, we're good, but again, thank you, all of the EMS, because you have been wonderful. And that's all I could say.
Thank you, Diane.
My name is Mark Muji, I live at 18 De Stefano Avenue in Spotswood. Mr. Stoll, I have a question for you. I saw on the ordinance, it would take effect February 1st. If the council passed the ordinance tonight, what was the borough's plan for providing EMS in between the signing of a contract with another agency?
Had this other opportunity not come about, it would have to pass it, and then it would have taken effect February 1st. We would have had a resolution appointing one of the two RFP competitors to the position.
My second question is, what consideration is there in the RFP for existing Spotswood EMS employees?
There is no written requirement in the RFP, but Robert Wood is certainly open to interviewing if the people meet their qualifications. Matt, I don't want to speak for you, if you wanted to address that.
Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital EMS is always looking for well-qualified EMTs and paramedics, and dispatchers, to be honest with you. So anybody who's in the sound of my voice, who is interested in working for me or working for us, please by all means put an application in. We cannot guarantee anybody who works in Spotswood employment, because we have a pre-employment process. And I would need to make sure that any employee who applied, who is an existing Spotswood EMT, who wants employment with Robert Wood Johnson, to go through that. That being said, there are several people, and I don't have an exact number unfortunately, who we share right now between Spotswood EMS and Robert Wood Johnson, who are employees that work at our department and at Spotswood. So clearly, we have the ability to share personnel in that way. I hope that answers your question.
That does, thank you.
Certainly.
And that's getting to the main point that I wanted to make, which goes to your question, Mr. Stoll, and about the difference between an agency from outside the borough and an agency inside the borough. And this is in large part due to the legacy of Mr. Service as director, that the people all standing in the back of the room are not all borough residents. In fact, a large portion of them are not borough residents. However, they treat this borough as their own. And Mr. Service can speak to that as well. The dedication of people who come from, even some of them miles away. I mean, we're talking people who commute for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, 50 minutes, they come to this borough for these residents. Period. They have other jobs closer to home that they could have, that pay more. The subject of EMS pay has come up over and over again, and my apologies to the public, I am a former EMS employee, if that gives you a little bit of a perspective into my comments, but the people in the back of the room treat this community as their own. They do not view them as bill payers, they do not view them as taxpayers, they view them as the people that they serve. They answer phone calls in the middle of the night, they come in when they weren't previously required to. And regardless of the money aspect, Spotswood will give up a part of its hometown heart by leasing out this service to save a bit of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Dulce.
Dulce Branca Rivera. I'm actually, your question for, on behalf of the Board of Education.
Sure.
What is the provision in the RFP to cover football games?
It would be exactly as we have now. A rig would be stationed there to be a responder vehicle for the town. Should they not have a call, that's where they would stay. Should a call come in, they would be dispatched from there. That's exactly what we have now. If the Board of Ed wants to have a dedicated rig there, they would do what they have to do now, they have to, they have to pay for a rig to be there, to be dedicated and not leave.
I don't believe we've ever paid for a rig to stay there.
Stoll, I would-
The Board of Ed has agreed that the rig would stay on scene, and if they have a call, the rig would leave. They have agreed to that in writing.
We only have one rig with our current system, and if we had a call, we have to leave.
Okay. And when we do drills, this year we did an evacuation drill, EMS was there, the director was there, we had a rig dedicated to the drill. When we do those things, or is that going to, are we going to have that? Or do we have, do we have to pay for a rig to be there for these drills?
Matt, can you respond to that?
As I noted earlier, we have a very robust disaster response team at Robert Wood Johnson EMS. We drill frequently in the community, we drill with county hazmat and SWAT teams and dive teams all around.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Will I have a rig, and do I have to pay for it?
For a drill, yes and no. Yes, you'll have a rig, and no, you won't have to pay for it.
I won't pay for it.
I'll make it short for you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Ma'am, to your point, though, we would probably provide you additional resources for a drill like that. So our SWAT team or our mass casualty response team would probably go above and beyond what you get right now for a drill at a school. That's a very big concern for us.
Thank you, Dulce.
In case you didn't know, Dulce is the president of the Spotswood Board of Education.
Hi, my name is Carrie Olbottom at 1 Karen Street. First of all, I want to comment on, with the lady from Clearwater, I was very surprised. I am a very rational person, even if I don't agree with you, and I would suggest humbly that in the future, you don't make that assumption, that if I'm not going to agree, that I'm being irrational. Okay? And I apologize if this was answered, because I don't really, I'm trying to follow the numbers, but some of the numbers that you were saying in the beginning, I didn't see on this paper. When you talked about whatever insurance didn't pay, the town would pay, that was, am I correct in hearing that?
The town just waives the fee of anything that insurance doesn't pay.
So, because you had said something about the town pays for that portion that's not covered, so that's not, that wasn't what I was hearing?
No, yes.
Currently, we waive the fee.
We waive the fee.
Currently.
Currently, I'm talking about if we go with another agency.
Exactly the same.
The borough would be paying a flat subscription fee in order to have that service continue for the residents.
Is that per time it happens, or is it one flat fee?
It's a flat fee per year.
Is that included in the 301?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's it. And, you know, like I said, I'm sure it's a very hard decision. We move to a small town because we like having small town, we like having our services here, so I want you to really think about it and make sure that the numbers really make sense, because it's very important for that community feeling, for all of our kids. They know them, I mean, I've used them a couple of times with my kids at the football field. You really need to think long and hard, and don't jump to make a decision to make it too fast.
Okay, thank you.
Angie Harper, 28 River Street. I don't need five minutes, you don't need to start the clock. I just have a couple of points to make. The gentleman said that a lot of the EMS drive 30, 40 minutes. They do. But I don't know if you realize, a lot of these kids have been here since high school. And, you know, that's pretty commendable for kids anymore. So before you go and just put a letter out like you did on Facebook, saying that our new staff would be more qualified, we would probably get better care than we have, I think that was really wrong. And that's very disrespectful. You already kind of like put us down tonight, and you've put down kids, and I think that you need to go back to the drawing board and work this out again. This lady, you know, she says Helmeta, we're a small community, we've worked with Helmeta, our kids go to school, you want to just toss Helmeta now too? I don't understand what you guys are thinking, and I know some of yous very well. I think that it's not too late, that you just need to stop and start over again. That's it.
Thank you.
How you doing? Beach Laker, 68 Alcoa Avenue. And I'm sitting here listening, and I'm looking at these numbers, and you know what? Right now, the numbers aren't what I'm concerned about. I'm looking around this room. See these officers here? They're the best. They work for us. We have volunteer firefighters here. They work for us. We have the best EMS. They work for us. Why are we getting rid of any of them? It doesn't make sense. And what really doesn't make sense is why are you guys so bent on not letting us have the right to vote on it? We're not asking for much. Come November, put it on the ballot and let us vote. It's our tax dollars. Let us decide what to do with it. I know it's hard, you're making decisions that I would never wish on anybody, and it's no respect to you guys, you do provide an excellent service. Believe me, I know. When I was, when I lived in East Brunswick, it was your paramedics that saved my ass. So, but we have the best of the best all the way around. Let us be the ones to decide if we want to keep them. That's all they have. It doesn't make sense to you.
My name's Joseph RC, I live at 35 Woodland Road. Quick question, these numbers here, the tax impact, is that based on the year or is that quarterly?
That is a year.
So it's even smaller than I thought. Okay, so, and the coverage that they provide, I just want to make sure, be sure you've answered it in some way or not, shape or form or the other. The service they currently provide, it's identical as to what they'll be providing, correct?
Well, actually, as Matt Strager had explained, that actually, there'll be greater resources than we have now.
It's going to be even better service?
Yes.
Okay, for minimal increased costs.
Actually, for less.
For less, even better. Do they have family health insurance coverage now?
No.
As it stands?
No.
Okay, but under these increased numbers, should we continue with them? They would either have single, if not family, correct?
Yes.
That's good. Just off the topic here, did you receive today's agenda meeting when you walked through the door, or did you have that prior to arriving?
We had it as of last night, I think, right?
That's good, at least you did.
We had a holiday.
Now, just to clarify, your agenda is to us, not to your time, not to your personal benefits, whether that's financial, stress, I don't care if it's to your ego. To say that the three-second photo op was not part of your agenda is appalling. It's insulting to someone who lost their life. You don't need to comment, I don't want to take your time.
Okay, you can just insult, I won't comment.
That's good. You talked about change is difficult, which I agree. I hate change. I detest it. I run an engineering firm. I like predictability, I like if it works, don't change it. However, you seem to struggle with the grasp of transparency, because the fact that you were apologizing for someone putting on Facebook the numbers that you failed to provide, wouldn't want to give it to us the day of the meeting, as if this is a complete transparent document that I could really deduce all that you've... I'm not even saying this is a bad option. $117 or $70 for the year, I spend more than that on my cell phone in a month. It's really irrelevant. If this is a better option, great, but you should at least be transparent. You serve the public, not your self-interest. Not that you're benefiting from this, what I'm trying to say is your ego is getting the better of you. And so, quite frankly, I've never been to a town hall meeting, I probably will never come again, but what I witnessed through Facebook and what I witnessed around this town, is that each and every one of you on some degree really think you're better than everyone else, and quite frankly, your attitude is what says you're not. It's humility, and quite frankly, I'll tell you right now, I'm not humble. That's why I'm standing here before you, insulting you. So I'm better than any one of them here. In fact, the ones in the back who are serving this public, who are serving this town, the officers around this room, they're all better than everyone of you, including myself. At least I know, I suck, you don't. So, with that, I'm going to stop.
Hello, hello. Knowing that I have five minutes, I have three items I want to go over.
Did you state your name, you said Cheryl, your address?
Cheryl Bass, 289 Main Street. Within five minutes, I just want to go over three items. Number one, that the building where the EMS were, was ruined. Number two, the current regulations. And number three, the Affordable Care Act. I'll get to number one at the end. Number two, current regulations. The numbers that we were given is based on the current regulations that take care of the emergency medical. So we got from the years 2011 up to the current time, how much, so to say, revenue comes in. And we're a small town, the economies of scale are such that we have to have the equipment, but the demographics are such that we have a smaller population, so percentage-wise, so to say, we'll say percentage-wise, we're expending a lot of tax dollars to make sure that everything is covered, even though the population is smaller. Okay, number three, the Affordable Care Act. Everything changed, because this year, so many new regulations and laws went into effect that the EMT has to meet all of these new monies, these new costs, these new regulations. And as you were saying, two doctors have to sign off on something. Years ago, it was one doctor, the Affordable Care Act is unaffordable in Spotswood. So that takes care of that, but let me dwell on number one. 2011 Hurricane Irene, 2012 Hurricane Sandy, the building was destroyed. And from that time, when we had former Mayor Thomas Barlow here, he said we had the 100-year flood, and then the following year, we didn't even have to wait 100 years, we had the Hurricane Sandy, which was even more devastating than the 100-year hurricane. And after that, he decided he's not going to be the mayor anymore, and that was enough for him. On the, on the website, the mayor issued a letter, there was also a letter from the president of the town council. The mayor says in his letter, "The borough council is under the impression that Spotswood EMS is supposed to be a moneymaker. I do not agree with that one bit. There is nobody on the council who considers the EMS as a moneymaking item. This is taxpayer dollars being expended for the life and death of the residents." Just as the gentleman was saying, this is a life and death matter, so money is not the main issue. The mayor goes on in his letter, and he says that he's looking to be transparent, give us numbers, against the wishes of the borough council. Once again, I do not believe that that has any bearing whatsoever in this particular matter. The mayor was put into office because everything comes from the mayor's office, leadership, authority, and all of the power to do things. The building was ruined in 2011.
Cheryl.
And from that point forward, it was never put back in service. We have three expenses, a new building, meeting up with the current expenses, and now taking care with the Affordable Care Act.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Megan Muji, 18 De Stefano Avenue.
Hi, Megan.
Hi. I have a couple of questions that I'm not sure have been answered yet. I'm trying to follow, and I've been doing a lot of research. Are we not in a democracy? I'm a science teacher, I know nothing about history and social studies, I'll be the first one to tell you that. I teach some of these fine people's children. But the fact is that I'm not getting the question, why no vote? Why are the people not allowed to vote on the issue that clearly this is something so important to them? Important to all of us. God forbid, any of us in this room will need this service, and they're going to provide the service? Money is not the option, as we found out. But why no vote? I'm not getting that answer.
This is the type of question where there are mitigating factors behind the scenes?
Like? If we're transparent? I would really like to know, I really want to understand.
And I don't want to have to go there, but-
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't mean to start anything, I really just don't understand, and I want to understand.
Excuse me one second. Business Administrator McDonald? Are there significant confidential personnel issues that you feel raise your concerns for the health, safety, and welfare of this community?
Yes.
Have you relayed those to the, she said yes. Have you relayed those concerns to the council and the issues?
Yes.
Have, does, Chief, are you familiar with the personnel issues that are confidential? Does that raise your concern for the health, safety, and welfare of this community?
I'm aware of some personnel issues, one or two of my own, but I am aware of some.
Okay, thank you. So as a question for the public to answer, it is not just all about money, but we are dealing with an issue that involves life and death.
Right.
I have a neighbor that was, that's a senior that lives alone, and I know when EMS is called, how important it is. Our most vulnerable people, our youth and our elderly people, and we have a lot in our community for our size.
Okay, so can I-
We have to watch for their welfare. And this, this sheet that you received with these three columns of numbers, took weeks of crunching numbers, and actually, while they're doing it, we understand it, but afterwards, you have to call and say, it's a very complex with lots of moving parts.
Oh, I completely understand. I would never be able to do this. I could tell you the full steps of how plants make energy and all that, but I could not even begin to understand this. However, the thing that I'm concerned about, yes, there are personnel issues, yes, it's confidential, I am 100% okay with that being confidential. confidential, I am 100% okay with that being confidential. However, if, I know you're saying it's not a money thing, so if it's not a money thing, why aren't we given the opportunity to fix that, moving forward? If we vote that we want to keep the service, give us an opportunity to make those corrections, to make those personnel things. It will take more money, but clearly, the townspeople just said that money is not the issue. So, you're telling us money is not the issue, it's life and death? Yes, we want to provide the best service. However, at that point, it just becomes the money issue. If you're saying that, if you're saying it's personnel, it's confidential, we are all worried about that. I would want that fixed too, if I were the director, or whoever the person is who makes these decisions. But we're not given the opportunity to fix that, and if it will require more money, the townspeople have spoken, that it's okay. We'll pay that money. Taxes are going to go up either way. No more questions.
Thank you.
How you doing, Kurt?
Okay.
My name is Larry Kramer, and I live at 11 Halsey Place here in Spotswood. I'm an emergency medical responder for Woodbridge Township Cert, and I believe that... Nothing against you guys, because I've done some training at your hospital with my group, and we do a lot of training all over the place, but it isn't always training. It's about people, and it's about how we feel about the people back there along that wall. I don't know any of them on a first-name basis, but I do know that when the gentleman that lives across the street from me, who's 97-years-old, needs EMS, they're there, along with the police department, because I live right across the street from him. Sometimes cheaper isn't always better, okay? Yeah, cheaper saves the town money, but I remember saying it in a meeting one time, that... Let me regress a second. Back in 2006, I had a kidney stone. Never had one before in my life, and our EMS was volunteer back then. The first call went in, nobody showed up. The second call went in, and the police department arrived at my house, and the pain that I was in, I asked the officer to shoot me.
Yeah.
I did, he just started laughing, I said, "Shoot me." The third call went in, and Monroe Township finally responded. That was wiped out, when we made all of those people paid, and working for the township. I'm a taxpayer here, just like everybody on the board, just like everybody in this room. I think that no emergency service should ever be taken out of town, okay? It just, I would rather pay more taxes, and I know we pay enough taxes as it is, but I would rather pay more taxes to keep EMS here, where we know that the moment you need them, not that they're on one end of town, or this one got called out to another emergency, and they're bringing another one in, we know that when we call for them, they're here. They're responding to us. And my mother lives in Clearwater Village, and she's on a fixed income. I would rather know that my guys, our guys, our people here, those dedicated employees back there, those dedicated EMS people, are going to respond to my mother when she needs them. Not saying that they won't, don't get me wrong, like I said, I understand what they do and how they do it, but it's always better when it's somebody that you know, or somebody in your community, or somebody, like he said, they're going to dedicate someone to learn the people in Spotswood. Well, they already know the people in Spotswood, so why shouldn't they just keep doing what they're doing? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Larry.
Hi, I'm Jody Evanega, 123 Simanske. I just want to say that I love that guy that was two people or three people before me, because he said everything so eloquently. I believe you guys ruined this, the way you handled it, from start, hopefully, finish line will be on our side, not yours. I knew nothing of this, and I've been here a long time. I saw no signs, I got nothing, and I read my mail, because I have nothing better to do. I knew nothing of this, thank gosh, and I'm very grateful that I live in a small town, because that's how I found out. So, you guys got voted in, you're not doing your job. Quick question for you about soft billing, and I guess it's for you too. When we soft bill, we now get that money, correct, as a township?
Yes, it goes against our, against expenses, yes.
Okay, is that in here anywhere?
Is that in...
The soft billing that we get, is that in here anywhere?
Yes, that's listed under Revenue, Base Budget 2014, pro forma.
So, that's in the revenue?
That is the revenue. So, our costs are 506,000, we have revenue of 327, and our net cost is 179.
Okay, and again, I agree with the other gentleman, that really, I pay more for my cable as well. My actual question is, since, and I may be wrong, because I may be misinformed, it wouldn't be the first time, were our EMS pink slipped for February 1st?
No.
No?
They were given a memo advising them that the ordinance was passed on first reading, and that the potential existed for outsourcing.
Was that the first, they knew of any of this?
No. Every single interview I have conducted since June, when the council tasked me with writing the RFP, every single interview I have conducted, I have advised each employee of what is going on, and that we don't know what is going to happen with EMS.
Okay, and you didn't answer the person two before me, of why is this not going to a vote? Obviously, this is probably the most people that have been in this room when you guys are at a meeting, since you've been voted in. Obviously, we're a township that's passionate about it. Is there a possibility that instead of on February 17th, you guys, you voted in to speak for us, make the decision, or will it be put to a vote?
We have been recording our meetings since December of 2014. For this to be put on a ballot, the mayor and administrator would have had to bring this to the council before, mid-August. There was no presentation ever asking this council. He has asked a couple of us individually, but there was no presentation to put this on the ballot from the administration.
No, they knew.
They knew, they knew.
We, again, the ones who obviously mistakenly voted this crew in, not as individuals, I cannot say that, because I don't know you all well enough, or how you stand behind closed doors on any of this, but as a unit, I wish I could rewind and revote.
There's been a lot of issues that we've been dealing with, just to give you, a lot of people...
Clearly, there's a lot of internal issues that I don't want to eat up my five minutes. So...
On that note...
Again, I'm going to back up and say, does this have to be voted on on 17, February 17? It's tabled until then. I don't think that's enough time.
Okay.
And I'm very disappointed in you, somebody who's been in the health all your life.
To me, I don't know nothing about these numbers, I really don't really care. To me, it's about integrity and trust. The integrity of these fine people who do a fine job for us, who live here and work in this community, and I trust that when they're going to come to my house, or somebody's house, that they're going to help me out, not that these people won't. With that being said, integrity and trust on you guys. I see that there's no integrity in the board here, and I don't trust a one of yous. And I'll tell you why. I got the floor, and I'll tell you why. And it's going to go off a little bit on what we're talking. Where I live, my house was built below street level. Township knew about it, I've been here 34, 35 years. Every time it rains, I get flooded, but you're still going to take my $9,000 in taxes. You don't care that maybe in the last 20, 30 years, I've been flooded maybe, hmm, five, six, seven, eight times, lost $10,000, $15,000 of my stuff, because the township allowed the builder at that time to build my house below street level. Doesn't take a rocket scientist or a degree to figure out that water runs downhill, but yet, the board, maybe not you guys, but the board at that time, Spotswood Board, allowed the builder to go ahead and do it. I buy a home, me and six other people, we flood out, and it's been going on for years and years and years. This is something that's been going on for many years, and I've been here many times in the past trying to correct that. So, to me, the integrity of the board, no. The trust, I don't trust a one of yous. I trust them. They have integrity. They live here, they work here, and they do a fine job for us.
They don't, they don't. There's not a single member of EMS that lives in town.
They do a fine job.
Thank you.
I don't trust you guys. But you'll take my...
I'm sorry, that's okay, go right ahead, honey.
Hello.
Hi.
Michelle Caldwell-Teneal, 49 Sloan Road, Spotswood resident. So, I'm a Girl Scout leader of Troop in Spotswood, I got a kid in the Spotswood school system, I go to the Spotswood Reformed Church. I talk to my neighbors on a fairly regular basis. You mentioned the fact that this could not be put to a vote, because it would have had to have been presented back in August. You said that you've been addressing this issue since June. Why is it that I knew nothing about it, until my husband told me about it, and he heard about it from a friend of his, who's an EMS member in East Brunswick? Why, you know, and to the issue of transparency, was there communication that I just missed?
This actually, we've been dealing with since the end of 2014.
So, were there mailings sent to people? How was it communicated that this was an issue, that if you wanted to have it, you know, possibly put to a vote, you needed to respond by such and such a day, in such and such a manner? Where was the communication to the town? Because that's what I, I don't know, and that's what I think I'm hearing from a lot of other people. Where was the communication to the town? When were we made aware of this situation?
There has been some discussions at council meetings, whether they're covered by the press or not, you know?
Not that, not that, okay, well, it doesn't have to be covered by the press, but wouldn't you think that a council, or some town mem, office, would send letters saying, "We are looking at changes, possible changes to the town's EMS system"? Why was there no communication?
We've been dealing with a problem, and we were elected to solve problems. Give you an idea...
You're still not answering my question.
Since this administration came into office, we've had four directors. We have had, in 2013, we hired seven people, four left. In 2014, we hired 20 people, 16 left, and in 2015...
You're not answering my question.
But these are the problems that we are dealing with.
I, so you're saying, because of these problems, no letter could be sent to the townspeople with regard to the fact that your EMS system is going to change? Is that what you're saying, that the problems were so systemic and so huge, that you could not make the people aware of a life or death situation that was going to impact them?
We entered into having an RFP, we had discussions about having an RFP way back in January.
Who was "we"?
Administration and council.
Okay.
So, you elect people...
Yes, and we elected you, but you have not made your constituency aware of a fairly substantial issue.
When we address an issue, where we have employees, all of that cannot always be in public. So, we have to address this, that's why, that's why this part is so difficult, because we have people that we have to, we have to care, we care about them, and that their work-life is hanging in the balance. Do we hang that over their head for a year or two, or do we research what has to be done, which we don't even know which way it's going? Before we did this analysis and study, we didn't know where the numbers were coming out. Before we did the RFP, we didn't know where the numbers were coming out. So, how can we have that hangover, everybody, while we work on it? Government does move slowly, and it takes a long time for this to happen, but this has gone through the system, as it should have, with discussion about an RFP, seeking quotes, and studying the system, and then we got the results, and we had to make a decision.
My five minutes are probably up, but at the point when...
Yes, they are.
When Ms. McDonald was making the EMST employees aware, could the townspeople have not been made aware at that point? Because it was already hanging over their heads at that juncture, right? You were telling them, "We don't know what's going to happen, something's going to happen, dah 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 dah." So, it was hanging over their heads.
Starting in June, because at a public...
Starting in June.
So, June, so they knew in June? So, why couldn't we know in June? It was discussed at a public meeting, there was a resolution adopted that was included in the minutes and posted on the website, and the video of the council meeting was on the website for anyone to see. It was all open in the public.
So, it was your fault?
Thank you.
It was our fault, or not people, we just have to...
Hello, Fran.
Hi, Kurt. Fran Reiser, you know where I live, 38 Main Street in Helmeta. I want to speak to response time. Thank you, Spotswood EMS. About four, four and a half years ago, I had an allergic reaction to an antibiotic, and Spotswood responded, and they came, and they stabilized me, and it was a life-threatening situation, I have severe allergies. Robert Wood was called, of course, paramedics, because I needed medication. So, they stabilized me, they put me on the stretcher, they took me out to the lawn. They're looking at each other going, "She's not doing good, she's going, she's coding." They didn't make it on time, and they had to put me in the ambulance and drive me to meet the paramedics, so they could save my life in the Mackler Conceptions parking lot. So, that just, that speaks to response time.
And that's very important to us.
I guess my point is that the paramedics from Robert Wood didn't make it on time, so that's a problem.
They're not stationed in town, they're called for emergencies.
I understand that, I understand that. It was a life-threatening situation, and it was long enough that they had to drive me to meet them, because they just weren't getting here fast enough. I was already treated, stabilized, still waiting for paramedics, so I'm sorry, guys, nothing against you, but it was very... I could have died on the front lawn, if it wasn't for the Spotswood EMS. I don't know if any of you guys were there at the time, but they saved my life, and I credit them for that, because I would have died right on the front lawn of 38 Main Street, if they didn't have the wherewithal to say, "Put her in an ambulance and drive her to meet them, because she's not going to make it."
Thank you.
Steve Chason, 14 Beth Court. I have just a quick question.
Yes, Steve.
Actually, a couple of questions. What is going to happen, or actually, first, Robert Wood. Have you ever had a town sign up for your service and then leave? Cancel the service, like us? Have you ever, have you ever taken over a town, like you're about to take over Spotswood, because that's pretty evident, and then have that town, after your contract was up, cancel your contract?
I'm trying to answer your question accurately. Recently, we had an arrangement that was not a contract with Greenbrook Township, and we were covering Greenbrook Township during the day. Greenbrook needed to expand their hours to 24/7, and entered into a shared services agreement with North Plainfield Fire Department, 24/7 to cover them for free, so we gracefully allowed that to take place. It was certainly in the township's best interest to allow that to happen, for a greater level of service for zero cost, through a shared services agreement. Other than that, I am not aware of any agents...
Any towns, have any towns like South River, East Brunswick, any towns that you guys cover, have they ever, at the end of their contract, said, "Look, we're not going to do this anymore, we're going to go another area"?
I don't want to speak conclusively. My memory, because I haven't been at Robert Wood for, I've been at Robert Wood Johnson for two years, and some of my knowledge base...
Were they on your team, would they know?
No, they would not, unfortunately. The, my understanding historically is, there was a period of time when Old Bridge Township and a period of time when...
I'm sorry, I have to keep it yes or no, because I only have five minutes.
I believe the answer's yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the answer's yes, because they were unable to meet their mission, and later...
Yes or no? I'll be Judge Judy, yes or no? Please don't speak unless I speak to her. What is going to happen with our ambulances and our first aid squad, when we sign this contract in February with them?
We have one fully operate, well, we have two. One ambulance has really been totaled, but we're still using it.
What is going to happen with it?
They're going to be stored for a, maybe a year, to see how things are going, what we, and if there's any changes in what we want to do.
And what about the building?
The building is being renovated.
Okay, how long is our contract going to be with Robert Wood?
Well, because of this other arrangement we're talking about, this RFP was for three years and two options?
Okay, so let's just stick with that for a second, because the other RFP just possibly came in, but based on what you said in January, at the last meeting, we were going to go probably with them for about three years. So, we're going to store the ambulances for a year. At that time, I guess we're going to sell them for revenue?
Possibly.
Okay. I'm in the used car business, you're going to get a very low number for them. If we sign with them for three years...
Especially the one that's totaled.
Exactly. If we sign with them for three years, and then it doesn't work out, and then we decide to come back in-house again, how are we going to fund that? Where's that money going to come from, for new ambulances, another building, equipment, anything else that might be needed, that we may have spread out over the three years, that now we have to buy it all at once? Where will that money come from?
Well, we need really almost two ambulances right away, right now anyway, if we were to stay in business.
Anyway, I'm talking about what's going to happen, we're not going to get ambulance, because we're going with them, but what's going to happen if that, when that contract runs out, what are we going to do then? Where is that money going to come from, when we decide to come back in-house? Or are we going to be caught with our pants... Or are we going to be caught with our pants down and have to sign with somebody else and take the best deal possible that we can get, and not be able to bring it back home again?
I'm going to speak for myself, because I don't want to speak for everyone. But when we did this analysis, it became abundantly clear that providing EMS on the scale that we provided is very inefficient.
Okay, I understand that. And that's why you're doing this. But that's not my question. And it's my five minutes.
My answer is, I don't see that happening. I don't see us getting back into the business, because it doesn't make sense now, and it's not going to make sense in the future. It's only going to be worse.
Well, we don't know if it's going to make sense in the future, because we don't know where the Obamacare is going to go. That's one of the things that we're saying about--
You heard our report that our revenue is like this.
Right?
And we're not doing it to make money.
But what happens if after three years of now--
We're doing it to offset our expenses.
If our offset, what we're paying them now, if they're not making money, and they come back to us and say, "You know what, Spotswood? This was a bad deal for us. Now we need $500,000." What's going to happen at that point? We can't say, "No, we can't do that." We have to, because we no longer have our equipment, we no longer have our ambulances, we no longer have our building.
The key to all of this is a regional approach. I said it at the first reading. I'll say it again. Even in the League of Municipalities magazine where we have--
So why don't we say with what we have--
Steve, can I answer if you ask me a question?
--until we go into a regional approach?
Can I answer if you ask me a question?